The November 13, 2013, meeting of the Ascension Parish Planning Commission will now come to order. Madam Secretary, please note that all members present with the exception of Mr. Josh Ori, who has welcomed a set of twins into their household, so we will excuse him from attending tonight. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brings us to Agenda Item Number Four, Introduction of Staff. Stacy, would you start, please?
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development. Lindsay Amanda, Legal Counsel for Planning and Zoning.
Michael Petty, Senior Project Manager.
Ben Moran, Parish Planner.
Lance Brock, Zoning Official.
Tim Moore, Engineering.
Thank you. Item Number Five, Chairman's Comments. A couple of things. Tonight, because of the way the Commissions are structured, we're going to have three meetings instead of two. We'll have a Planning Commission, a Zoning Commission, and between those, we will have a Joint Planning and Zoning Commission. Because of the way the ordinances were set up, we're required to do this, so we will have three sets of minutes next week, next month, rather, to approve. Not sure how this happened. I think, you know, when you put lawyers in charge, things like this happen. I don't know. The other thing is that after this meeting, I will have completed my term as Chair of this Commission and of the Zoning Commission, so we will have on the agenda next month the election of a new Chair and Co-Chair, so I'd like you to start considering who you may like to select for that, for those positions. Item Number Six, Approval or Denial of the Minutes of the October 9, 2013 Planning Commission Meeting. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nezal moves. Mr. Chafisi seconds. Any objection? Minutes stand approved. Item Seven is the Consent Agenda, and again, we have two affidavits of mortgage declaration. This is something that needs to be done so that this, the, we can have everything in order for these, for these divisions, simple divisions. Any questions, or would anybody like to bring up any of these, either of these individually? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Bishop moves.
Second.
Mr. Burgess seconds. Any objection? The consent agenda stands approved. Item Number Eight is the Public Hearing to Approve or Deny the Following Family Partition. The first one is the Thomas &amp; Severio Senior Property Lots 1, 2, 3, and 4. Mr. Quintmaul.
Good evening. I'm Clint Quintmaul, representing W.J. Quintmaul Surveyors, asking for Plan Commission approval on the Thomas &amp; Severio family partition. All comments have been addressed.
Okay. There was a request for variance on the T-turnaround requirement. What's the deal there?
Yeah, as we can see, it ends at Lot 1, and due to the area and length, that can be extended. We just don't want to cut it off there at this time.
Okay. Any questions of Commissioners? Okay, this does require a public hearing, so at this point, I will open the public hearing. Do we have a card, Stacy?
No, we don't.
Okay. Okay, well then, we can close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments by Commissioners? Entertain a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Mr. Chafisi moves for approval.
Second.
Mr. Callender seconds. Any objections? That family partition stands approved.
Thank you. You have a good night.
Okay. Item Number Nine, Public Hearing to Approve or Deny the Following Preliminary Plats. The Villas at Sagefield, First and Second filings, that's a revision. McLennan Associates. Is the petitioner here?
Ellen Jackson with McLennan Associates, representing this preliminary approval. There were some comments. We've addressed them, asking for your approval.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Again, we need a public hearing to, before we approve or deny this, so we'll open up the public hearing at this time. Cards on this one, Stacy? Okay. All right, then, we can close the public hearing, and if there are no other questions or concerns, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Mr. Callender moves to approve.
Second.
Mr. Chafisi seconds. Any objection? That preliminary plat then stands approved. Thank you. Item Number Ten, A Public Hearing to Approve or Deny the Following Overlay Zone Site Plan Review. Light Industrial Development Standards, Jack McDowell Office Warehouse, Mr. Aguilar and Associates.
How you doing? Thank you. My name is Brian Aguilar, B.M. Aguilar and Associates. We're just asking for approval of the building design, which is regulated by the, used to be Business District, I think it's Light District, Light Industrial District now, for the front of the building design with the applicable requirements.
Okay. And this is something, I think this is the first that this Commission has dealt with. Mr. Brock, can you give us a little background on the process here? What are we doing and why are we doing it?
Yes, sir. According to the code, underneath Light Industrial, there's a Light Industrial District, or Light Industrial Review Process, that the Plan Commission has to approve. Those standards are spelled out in the code itself, and based on that, it's a, it's a review process that the Commission approves his development, or his building, I guess you could say.
Okay. And this, this area is...
Light Industrial. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's right next to the heavy industrial, like plants down on, on the river?
Basically, this property right here is, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. It's on 73.
On what side of Highway 30?
It's going to be on the north side, so it's like you're going back toward, toward Dutch Town. Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Questions of Commissioners? All right, then, again, we need a public hearing to either approve or deny this, so I'll open up the public hearing. Any comment cards? Okay. All right, we'll close the public hearing then, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nezal moves to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burgess. Any objection? That motion stands approved.
Thank you.
B is Light Industrial Development Standards, Adrian Wagasback Office Warehouse. Similar deal?
Yeah, Brian Aguilar, again, this same, same situation, similar in construction and same zoning, just asking for approval for the building.
And we see that staff, again, recommends approval of the plan review. Any questions or comments of Commissioners? Okay. Let's open up the public hearing on this issue then. Any cards? No. So we'll close the public hearing, and once again, I will entertain a motion for this item 10B.
I'll move for approval.
Mr. Chafisi moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Callender. Any objection? That motion stands approved.
Thank you.
And the third one, Light Industrial Development Standards, Adrian Wagasback, B Office Warehouse. Again, Mr. Aguilar.
Same thing, I'm sorry. There was two buildings there, we're doing for the same, Mr. Adrian, side by side, almost identical in construction in the front.
They're adjacent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, comments? I'll open up for a public hearing. No cards? We'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion on this.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nezal moves to approve.
Second.
Mr. Bishop seconds. Any objection? That motion stands approved.
Thank you.
Okay. We will get, go to Agenda Item 11A, Revocation of Servitude. We have a public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the Council, the following servitude revocation. Carlino Place, Second Filing Lots 15A1 and 15A3, it's on South Swamp Road in Prairieville. You are representing the petitioner?
Yes.
Okay. Notice that we have some concerns by Atmos. Can you address that for us?
I think Atmos, as long as we didn't revoke that portion where the 12-foot utility servitude is, they would be okay. So we wouldn't revoke that portion anyway, because it's already a servitude.
Because that was the only objection, and...
Yeah.
If you look at the wording of it, it is a little vague as to what they're objecting to and why, but I'm just uncomfortable with the fact that we don't have a clean slate of no objections.
Well, it says it has no objection as far as, you know, we don't revoke that portion that's the 12-foot utility servitude that's running along Carlino Drive and Swamp Road.
Okay, and y'all, y'all okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Staff?
I think in this situation with Atmos' letter, the best way to handle this is, rather than the, the original map that's in the packet where it shows the highlighted revocation of the servitude, all the way to the roads that, if the, if the Commission, you know, sees fit to, you know, recommend, you know, to the Council, the revocation minus those two, and then we would just make a note that, you know, when the revised map is done, if the servitude is revoked, that the servitude does not show all the way to those utility servitudes at the two roadways.
So we could approve this contingent upon the petitioner having a revised map sent to the Council?
In this scenario, because it's a revocation of a servitude, it has to go to Council anyway, so you're going to recommend to send it to Council, and you can recommend it with the modification to that map to show that you're not revoking it all the way to the roadway, that you're actually revoking it to those utility servitudes. And I think at that point, Atmos would not have an issue, because as Ms. Jackson described, it's really the situation is, they don't want to revoke it to the road, because those are utility servitudes, and there very well could be facilities in those servitudes.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Okay. So, we need a public hearing for this as well. Before we do that, though, any questions by Commissioners or comments? Okay. All right, I'll open the public hearing. You have any cards, Stacy? Okay, so we close the public hearing, and I will need someone to very carefully word this motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think we can approve it as written, less the 12-foot portion of utility service outlined by Atmos, make that recommendation to the Board, to the Council.
I think that would suffice.
That would suffice? Okay. Well, that's our motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Bishop seconds. Any objection? Okay, the motion stands approved. We'll recommend that to the Council.
Thank you.
Okay, item, Agenda Item 12. Public Hearing to Recommend Approval or Denial to the Parish Council, Amendments to the Ascension Parish Unified Land Development Code. The first one, 12A, is Ordinance DR 13-11, revisions to the Drainage Regulations of the Unified Land Development Code pertaining to the placement of fill. And this is something that has been discussed on several occasions, at least the last two meetings that we were here. Lance, you want to give us maybe a summary of the changes?
I believe that, if I'm not mistaken, there's highlighted in some of the changes. I think elevate any structure. This is in 17507B of individual lots, and shall not, the fill and shall not, shall be limited to the foundation of the structures, and shall not extend more than 24 inches beyond the limits of the foundation, and the slopes, the side slopes of the fill shall not be steeper than three horizontal, one vertical slope. And I'm not sure if, I know that we discussed this at the last meeting and everything, and I don't know if he, if Ricky made all changes. I think, I don't think there's anything there, other than just bringing it back, just based on the last meeting that y'all, that we discussed last time in reference to this.
We had quite a bit of discussion, and he said he was going to, going to really word it in accordance with what we had kind of had a consensus on last meeting. Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I had recommended a change in the wording of this to make it a little more clear, and it didn't get incorporated in this. I talked to Ricky about it. We didn't have time to change it...
That's correct.
...before this meeting, but you look at the, at Paragraph B, remember that we, I'd suggested that we allow the fill, rather than sloping down from, from the edge of the foundation down, that we allow the fill to come out horizontally for some amount, and we, and we agreed to a maximum of two feet. But the way it's worded is a little bit confusing. It says, "Fill shall be limited to the foundation of the structure and shall not extend more than 24 inches beyond the limit of the foundation." The intention was that it not extend more than 24 inches horizontally...
And then sloped.
...beyond the limit before it begins to slope. So the language I suggested was that fill shall be limited to the foundation of the structures, and to no more than 24 inches horizontally beyond the limits of the foundation before beginning to slope. Send, I'd sent that language to, to Ricky. Lance, I don't know if you saw it or not, but...
No, sir.
I suggest that we make that change, just to clarify that, because it sounds like, you know, the fill will definitely be more than 24 inches beyond the foundation, it just will be sloping down. So we just want to make sure that it's clear, it's horizontal for 24 inches before it begins to slope.
Okay.
And then, Paragraph, or Sentence C, let's see. I suggested we say that fill extending beyond the foundation of the structure, or structures, shall not be steeper than a three-foot horizontal to one-foot vertical slope, rather than just saying steeper than a three...
To what?
Well, I actually did make that change.
Yeah, he did.
Okay. So that one was incorporated, the first one wasn't, for some reason, so if we would just make that change, I would be amenable to that.
Okay. Any other comments?
And I think that, is that both on the...
On the next order?
Individual lots and on?
Yes, sir. Right, I see that he did put it on the lots larger than a half acre.
Yeah.
And he did put that in, in there.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So it's on both...
Yes, sir. Correct.
Both of those. Okay.
Okay, so that would need to be changed as well, then? Okay.
Yes, both, in both spots.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we, we need a public hearing to, before we take action on this, so I'll open up the public hearing. Have any cards, Stacy?
No.
Okay, so we can close the public hearing. So we have Ordinance DR 13-11, that's Agenda Item 12A, and with a couple of amendments that Mr. Chafisi made, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Bishop moves.
Mr. Bishop moves. Mr. Callender will second. Any discussion, any other discussion? Any objection? Okay, that is approved, then we'll recommend that ordinance to the, to the Parish Council. The next item is, is B, Ordinance SR 13-14, revisions to the subdivision regulations of the United Unified Land Development Code pertaining to protection of existing watersheds and conveyance system requirements.
Yeah, this is the, we discussed this revision last month, and just to clarify what is meant by impervious surface.
Clarify what is meant by what?
By the impervious surface.
So we change that to less pervious?
Yes. Just a clarification.
So you would have an absolute there?
Yeah.
Right. Okay. All right, so that, that is the only change that we're recommending.
And there is an additional change on there, just a reference, an incorrect reference.
Okay.
In, in one of the paragraphs, it was referencing a section that is, was taken out.
Okay. All right. Any questions of Commissioners? Okay, we'll open a public hearing for this as well. We have anyone? We have a speaker? Would you like to, yeah, just fill out a card and go ahead and talk, and we'll handle it later. Identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Brian Aguilar, again, B.M. Aguilar and Associates. I think this came up, I had asked Tim, in discussion with clients, and, you know, they asked me to come up with a design for a site, and the way I understood it was if you had 17,500 feet of impervious conditions or less, then you weren't required to mitigate the runoff, the added runoff with retention pond. And we got into a discussion about the definition of impervious. I assumed impervious was impervious. Well, looking at the definition in the code, it states that Ascension Parish's Drainage Ordinance definition of impervious is anything that has been improved by man, and it was a little deceiving when I would try to explain this to my clients, and they, they were under the sta, under, they had the understanding that they could do 17,500 feet of concrete in building, and then do maybe gravel in, in the back of the building. And in discussions with Tim, he, they, he interprets that, not to be correct, he interprets that anything, improvements to the property that exceeds 17,500 square feet, fall under the, you have to, you have that much more added improvements to the property, then we would have to mitigate the runoff, which requires a lot of people to have retention ponds on small sites. So if you have a one-acre commercial site, and you want to put a building and a parking lot in it, it doesn't leave you very much room. And I think there was an outcry when we first passed the, when you first passed the Drainage Ordinance, this, this exception was not a part of the Drainage Ordinance, and I think there was an outcry of, from the developers and citizens, private people building these small buildings on these small sites, and this was an exception to the Drainage Ordinance at that time. And I had asked Tim to maybe clarify the definition of impervious, and I'm not sure, Tim, you said that there was an added paragraph, a change to the paragraph?
No, we just changed the, the impervious to a less pervious.
So it states now that there, anything more than 17,500 square feet of improved conditions, is that...
Well, sort of improved conditions, but if, like if you're going from a dirt to a, you know, a grass, it's, if it's the same kind of pervious area, then it wouldn't be included. But if you're going from a, from a grass, a dirt to a gravel, it would be included.
Okay. So you're including gravel as impervious conditions now, or more...
As less pervious.
Less pervious.
Yeah. I think the intent of the whole thing is, is if you're increasing the amount of runoff from the property, in terms of how quickly the runoff occurs, then it's an improve, then it's an improvement that, that's impacting the runoff. You could do an improvement that, that slows the runoff down, and, and there are other mitigating methods other than retention ponds, things, anything that'll slow the runoff off of the property can be considered an improvement that would, would not impact, you know, would not require that you do a retention pond, for instance, you know? So there could be, the whole intent of it, this was just to clarify the intent. The intent is if you're increasing the amount of runoff from the property, you have to mitigate it, if it's over a certain, certainly if it's, if it's concrete or, or metal roof or whatever, it's completely impervious. Gravel road's not completely impervious, but, and there probably are some guidelines that we could use to say, well, how much does that impact it compared to what it was before? If it was pasture before, you know, that absorbs quite a lot of rainfall before it starts running off. If it's gravel, how much does that absorb before it starts running off? I don't know personally, but there are ways to figure that out. The intention was, I don't think the intention was to say, everything, every improvement, so-called improvement, is going to require, is going, that goes beyond the 17, was it 17,500? How much?
Yes.
Yeah, every improvement beyond that necessarily is an improvement that creates a more runoff. It might not.
So basically...
But if you want to argue that the gravel, you know, I guess you'd have to argue with engineering, does the gravel...
Well...
...create as much of a runoff problem as, as it, as it was as a, what was it before? Dirt road or pasture or whatever it was?
And I have, and I think that's why we're here, so...
Yeah.
I was just trying to get it clarified, and then, you know, I understand, as a, as a designer, I have no issues with it, I just think it's going to cause a few developers to say, why can't I do that?
Yeah.
You know? So I was just asking that it be clarified, and I think, I think...
I think we can sympathize with that, and we could probably make some concessions when it, when it seems reasonable to do that. But I, we'd also, we should also look into other things that might mitigate, help mitigate, other than retention ponds, because you're right, that's a very big expense, and there's not always enough room on the property to do a, a retention pond. It's a maintenance issue and everything else, but there are some other ways to, to mitigate runoff. Talk about that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other people want to comment? Okay, we will then close the, the public hearing. Any other questions of Commissioners? What is your pleasure on this item?
Chairman, move for approval.
Mr. Burgess moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Callender. Any objection? Motion stands approved. We'll recommend that to the, to the Council. Thirteenth, Staff Report. I want to mention here that Mr. Compton is out this evening, his, his father is ill, and he's, he's taking care of that, so he's, he is not here, but he was asked by a couple of Parish Council members, and I also talked to him about this, to start the process of looking at impact fees in Ascension Parish. This, this is something that had been attempted about, what, eight, nine years ago, and quite an extensive study was done, a lot, a lot of work was done, a lot of public input and so forth. I was part of that group that, that was working on that back then, ended up with a proposed ordinance that I personally thought was, could have been very effective. It did not pass the Council, and that impact fee's died at that point. Just in general, an impact fee is an attempt to, try to, to get the, the people who are moving into an area, the, the new development in area, and if they impact a certain part of government function, that, that's a cost, that we would find a way to assess that developer to pay for the impact. You know, on a simple basis, if you take an impact fee for transportation, if you develop a subdivision and you increase the number of cars on the road, that's going to increase the maintenance and, and maybe the need for, for additional roads and so forth, so that impact fee then would, would help to pay for the impact of the additional traffic. It's a very, theoretically, it's a very simple concept. The, the devil is, is always is in the details of it, and there's, there's a number of questions that would need to be asked. First of all, what type of impact fee would we be talking about? I mean, when people move in, they impact the schools, they impact the sewer, they impact the traffic, they may impact several other things, and it's a question of what particular impact do we want to address? And then the nuts and bolts of how we do that, how, how it's done, is, is fairly complex. So we asked Ricky to, to start this process going, so he sent to us, and it's in, in our packet, the original draft ordinance back from, what year was that? 2006?
2006, 2008.
Yeah. And I don't know if you've had a chance to, to look through it or, or read it, what we'd like to do is, maybe tonight, just get the ball started, and see if anybody has any particular comments about it, and perhaps at the next meeting, if it's, if it's your wishes, we can have a more detailed Q and A with this, maybe we can bring in some of the people who developed this original ordinance, ask them some questions, and see what's going on. A big item, I think, is going to be actual, the legality of it, because there have been court cases recently that, that have challenged this concept, and we need to look at, at even the legality of, of impact fees. But I think in general, the people who currently live in Ascension Parish would like for the people who are moving in to shoulder some of the burden of the impact that they caused to our parish, and that's the whole point behind impact fees. Lance, did, did Mr. Compton... Lance, did, did Mr. Compton speak with you about this? Any comments that he wanted to make?
No, sir, other than, you know, what he submitted and sent to you, and other than this was the draft of the ordinance that was done in 2006 from Charles Landry, and it's basically the, the ordinance, this is the exact ordinance that was submitted, so.
Okay. All right.
Chairman, the original ordinance was primarily, well, it was essentially a transportation impact fee ordinance. Are we saying that we're, we want to look at this in a broader way, and look at potential wastewater impacts and other?
Well, we are saying whatever we want to say.
Okay.
It, the reason, from, from my memory, the reason we, we stuck with transportation when, when we did that originally was, it was probably the, the easiest and the, the, as far as, as assigning a specific impact, you could actually look at studies, you could look at what traffic does, when you're looking, what, what the cost of increased traffic, and, and that, that's a lot easier to do than, say, the cost of sewer, for example. It would be a little bit less specific.
Well, if that's the case, then would we want to take the, would we want to separate those issues?
Yeah.
And just look at a transportation impact fee ordinance?
Yeah.
And then possibly look at a separate, perhaps more complex?
There was even talk for a little while about, about a school, an education impact fee, because, again, you can very specifically say, if X number of people live in a subdivision, a certain percentage of them will impact the public school system, and buildings will have to be built, and you can get very specific on that. But the reason, I think, that that was pulled back was that they're just gonna take one bite of that apple, because it would have gotten to be a very exorbitant impact fee. Personally, I, I would have been in support of the school system getting impact fees, but I understood that you had to, to kind of work on what, what you could get. But in other areas of the country, you have a, a lot more, higher impact fees than we see in this ordinance, and it does involve schools, and it does involve public safety and transportation and things such as that.
Well, yeah, I, I mentioned this before, I've lived in two other states, and both areas I lived in had impact, development impact fees. They were primarily transportation. I don't recall impact fees on, on other things. Possibly wastewater, but they were definitely transportation impact fees, even, even to the extent of improving the, or adding, paying for a portion of the interstate system in Southern California. So that was, of course, that was, that was when development was absolutely booming in Southern California, and they could probably do that and get away with it.
Mr. Bishop?
Are we considering exacting this fee from individuals who build a house on a, a piece, acre of land, or are we talking about exacting impact fees from developers of major subdivisions? Does every individual who builds any structure anywhere where anybody might go to it have to pay an impact fee? Or are we only talking about what we consider, or a regulation say is, a major subdivision here?
And that would be an issue that, that we could discuss. I think that this particular ordinance had to do with subdivision developments, as opposed to, if you've already, you already own property and you build a house that was, that was part of that, I'm not sure that that was, was included in there. But it's something that we need to, to look at. So I think, maybe by next meeting, if you all want to continue this discussion, we could spend a little bit of time in advance, looking at the specifics of it, and maybe getting some, some resources here to, to talk through the, the, the language of it, and then perhaps some legal opinion as to where we stand with that.
Do we know if this was modeled after any other area, some other area that enforces impact fees?
Yeah. Well, it was, as I remember, they looked at, at several counties in Florida, and, and based the structure of it on that, if I remember correctly, isn't that right, Lance?
I think so, and I also, I also remember St. Tammany being in there somewhere, but that was also the time that I think that Mr. Donald stated, that there was a, there was a legal battle there, there was lawsuits, so I don't know exactly what happened with that. I do remember at that time, that I think it was with that, that, that St. Tammany, and I think they were going through some lawsuits of some sort, and so.
Could we get a resource that would give us the lay, lay of the land on what legally is out there, and at the same time, what types of impact fees have been used in the past, you know, recently, like maybe from CPACs or the NPO?
Well, I was, in talking with Mr. Compton, Mr. Charles Landry was the, the person, he's an attorney.
That's correct.
He put this together, I think he specialized in that, and if, if possible, if we could get him here at our next meeting, I think that would be very good to, to answer a lot of these questions.
Right, and I would like to him to address specifically Coontz versus St. James, Lieutenant John's River Water Management District, Supreme Court case that was decided on June 25th, 2013, that's thought by legal scholars is going to have a large impact on all fees.
Impact fees, yeah.
Well, not only impact fees, but, but, but lots of impact on land use regulation.
Okay. Yeah.
Also, are we thinking of exacting, or should we discuss whether this is only for residential development or for industrial development? For instance, if there's the new shell plant being built, and there are 10,000 workers driving there, should the industrial developer have an impact fee because of the traffic caused by all of the workers going to drive to the construction site?
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's certainly a large number of issues that we can bring up, and I would encourage you to look through this and, and think about questions that we would need to ask before we take the next step in, you know, if there's another step that we want to take in terms of the impact fees.
I think this is a step in a, in a positive direction, because the parish is growing.
Yes.
It's apparent there, there are a variety of impacts that are being imposed on the resources here. But yet, I would like some discussion from probably some professionals, as I reviewed this document, for example, exemptions.
Right.
Exemptions for additions, well, it seems like to me some additions can bring about an impact, why do we want to exempt that? So obviously, I would like to hear from someone to explain certain sections of this document to devil's advocate, why are we doing this? I, I can appreciate the intent, the spirit behind this, yes, we need to, somehow, we need to fund these impacts that are placed upon up. I just need to understand, some of the things that I read, I glanced at it, like, why are we exempting this? So yes, I would like further discussion, maybe public notice and draw some professionals in.
Also, I'd like to discuss whether, you know, the popular mantra a while back was that rooftops cost money to a political subdivision, and since then, there's been many studies that show, instead of costing money to a subdivision, I mean, a political subdivision, a parish or a county or a state, instead of each of those new residences or rooftops, as they call them, exacting money from the, from the political body, they're actually net contributors. And so we need to discuss whether they actually cost the public anything by moving here or not.
Right. And that would depend on the, the tax structure of the, of the individual governing unit. In some places where property taxes are really high, they probably would be a net positive. But then, there's, those are all questions that we need to, to, to bring up and, and talk about. So I would suggest that we continue maybe at the level of staff report, not, certainly not ready to, to vote on an ordinance or anything like that, but be prepared to, to have a list of questions, we'll get the resources, we hope to, that can answer those, and perhaps we can generate interest from the public in, in looking at this issue. Okay? Okay, anything else in the staff report, Lance? That's it. Okay, item 14 is the engineering staff report. Tim?
Well, first of all, we want to introduce a revision to 174045. There are two paragraphs that we would like to have revisions to, based on talking to our drainage director. The first of all is, currently, the, the code requires a 30-foot servitude from the inlet to the outlet of the ponds. And talking to the drainage director, he'd like to make it, if we're taking offsite, offsite drainage, we want that servitude going through the pond, but if we're not taking offsite drainage, and it's only drainage for the subdivision, we do not want to have that servitude in there.
You wouldn't require it there, huh? Okay.
And then the, the second part of this is also, there is now a requirement to have five-foot fences around the, the ponds, regardless, I mean, if, if they're there, or, or on the channels, rather, and no matter what, it requires a five-foot fence, and the drainage director would like to have his option, because sometimes we don't really, you know, want those five-foot fences on there, and he'd like to build, to have the option of requiring it.
And maybe it could be worded as, he would have the option to waive the requirement, rather than, I, I don't know that that makes a difference legally, but...
No, it can't be an arbitrary choice. You can't rule this way for this person and rule that way for another person.
Yeah. But at some, in, in some cases, they would definitely need the five-foot fence, right?
Actually, since I've been here, we've never really needed it, I've always seen it in there that, and we always require it, but...
So there's no really point in having the fence?
Not, not usually. He'd like, if there is, he'd like to have the option to put it there, but...
What was the purpose in the first place? A safety issue?
I would assume so.
Yeah, they're, they're in, I deal a lot with drainage in, in New Orleans, and the fence is put up often because it's an attractive nuisance. There are huge canals there, though, and they're deep, sometimes concrete-lined canals, so you fall into the canal, you can't get out, there's no way to get out. So there, the fences are put up, it's safety, because it's an attractive nuisance.
But wouldn't that be a responsibility of the property owner, rather than us requiring that?
Well, we have a servitude.
Well, if, if we have a servitude on it, then it would be ours responsibility.
I say we, you know, give, give him the prerogative of, of requiring the fence if he thinks it's necessary. It is somewhat subjective, but he'd have a reason for doing it, right? That's the point. So you don't ordinarily need it, so if you put, you may require, if you believe it's a safety or issue or an attractive nuisance, you would require the fence.
I believe, I believe that would be the, the case.
I would like to ask Lindsey, in Louisiana, is a pond in a pasture, for instance, an attractive nuisance?
Not, not to my knowledge.
I don't think it is either.
We're talking about drainage ditches here, drainage canals, usually slopes, kids fall into them, you know, and when there's a heavy rainfall, there's, there's often a torrent of water going through. It's dangerous, it could be dangerous. So in areas in New Orleans where that's the case, they put fences up, not everywhere, but they do, some.
All right, so then we could, if it is your wish, we could put this ordinance on the agenda the next meeting for a public hearing and vote and recommend to the council. If, do we need a motion, I guess? Is it to that effect? Okay, Mr. Bishop moves.
Second.
Mr. Callender, seconds, we'll, we'll put that on the agenda for the, for the December meeting. Okay, so that brings us to item number 15, adjourn.
We should adjourn.
We'll adjourn. We'll start the next meeting, the joint meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission, in about three or four minutes.